There's a man in a car, sitting there. And when I pulled out of my driveway, I had to call my son. He's covering his face like this. Now, sure, I don't know who he is. I don't know. I got his license and then with my brain, I forgot it. I got so upset. And yes, I didn't call the police because I seem to trust people. I don't know why, but I do. The next time, believe me, I will call the police. But why are they sitting in front of my house? And then I find postcards in my mailbox saying, "Are you going to sell your house?", which is up for sale. "But we will give you cash for it." I mean, really. I never had anything like this. And being in my home, I'm afraid too. So, you know, I don't think it's fair. I hope the council, the police, everyone here, understands the fear in the community and for the children. And yes, we love the kids. You know, for years, children played in the parks. I'm near that one park. Fine, great, have pigments, do what you want. But not when you're coming in with such an extensive amount of kids or people or whatever, having pigments and leaving garbage all over the place in plain English. If you were there, you would see it.
Good evening. My name is Howard Tierski. I'm here with my wife Maha. We're residents of Mala for over ten years. The prior speaker spoke about fear. And I can understand and sympathize that it may make one fearful if you see numbers of people who don't look like us, who may not look like they're part of our culture because they dress differently, perhaps behave differently. I think it's important that we carefully not allow the desire to speak. We support the idea of enforcing the laws of this community, of course. And if a situation occurs overcrowding in parks or things like that, to consider, as prior speakers have mentioned, new rules or whatever that protect the community, that's fine. But I do think, based on the dialogue that we've heard around this topic, that there is a risk of slipping into making choices based on discrimination against certain religious groups. And I think that that's not to the benefit of the community. And I think it's something that we need to be careful about.
Sir, I'm sorry. Again, members of the public. Beginning of this hearing, there was two times, three times after we started, asked members of the public not to make these kinds of comments. And we should return them. So again, please refrain from making those sort of comments. We appreciate that.
I apologize. The room is full. The downstairs area does not have good connection. And so, most of us that weren't in the room at the very beginning to get in this room would have not been able to hear most of this session so far. So if you've made those comments, please don't think I'm disregarding them. I haven't heard that. I'm not actually entirely clear on what the restriction is of what it is we can and can't speak about. I only wanted to speak to the issue here.
If you'd like to just speak as to overcrowding in parks and you want to keep it generic, I have an objection to that.
Well, I think I made my point about the first issue that you mentioned. The other thing I would say, as a point of fact, is that one of the prior speakers mentioned the Mala Strong organization and the large number of people that are gay. I think it's absolutely accurate to say that the large number of people here is a reflection of the interest in this topic. I would ask the council to be aware of the fact that I think we have a diverse group of people here in terms of why they're interested in this topic. And I don't think that every person that's here today is here because they want the gay women taken down and we want to make sure that the council is taking steps. I understand. I thought that was considered.
Let me back up a bit, okay? We're not here to see many again. You may not have heard this.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, here you are.
We are not here this evening to discuss the era or any particular religious group. We're not entertaining any comments from the public, normal discourse, or respond to any such comments.
So why are we here? It was wrong me to be disrespectful. I was under the impression this was about this topic. And maybe I was a little silly.
If you would like to talk about enforcement of the sign ordinance, I don't have a concern about that. I would again remind everyone to stay away from discussing the era and anything pertaining to a particular religious group. My concern is that I don't want any comments made by the public or by this body that could arise to any sort of liability. Okay?
Okay. Well, I'll just make one last comment about the sign ordinance. And I think, I appreciate your attention. And I believe you've completed our comments anyway. I don't believe that a piece of pipe with no words or symbols on it constitutes a sign. And so I'll just admit that. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Bamshe, B-A-M-S-H-I. And I live on 55 West 7th Road in Mala. I'm an immigrant, been in this country for about ten years, been in Mala for five years. And today, I would like to say that Mala has been extremely accepting of who I am, where I'm from, my accent, my color and everything. Most diverse town. And I don't think there is an issue with diversity or people. I have a beautiful fifteen-month-old daughter. And I do, I see what the issue is. Last week, we wanted to take her to the park and it was overcrowded. Not that I have a problem with that. But being a Mala resident, I would like the council to consider a couple of options, if I may. I mean, I'm not on the council, but I maybe could make a proposal that could go to the bottom of the list and crawl up whenever. So the first thing I would like to propose is, if it can be prioritized that the residents are allowed to park. We all get parking stickers for free from the Mala. Don't forget, I already did the work. If we still get priority for parking or the parking can be made for residents only, that would help with the crowding situation. The other thing I would like to propose is if there are four families with four kids each that want to take their kids to the park, it's not a problem. But if there are two adults with thirty, forty, fifty kids in the park, there is an overcrowding issue. And I would like to consider, I mean, I'd like the council to consider to put some crowd control efforts in place. Say, you know, if it's a group of more than six, seven, eight, ten, whatever number of individuals, you would need a permit or a permission to be in the park so that the other residents, because we pay taxes, get our fair amount of time to spend in the park. I would like my daughter to enjoy her swing when she's, you know, at an age where I can tell her that it's okay to be on the swing and play and see the other kids, but if it's overcrowded, it's always a problem to, you know, I can't do that to her. And it's not fair. That's it.
Mayor and I sat in a meeting today along with the business administrator, along with our attorney. And basically, one of the things that occurred was we were discussing about Upper Saddle River. How Upper Saddle River has a permit for parking. They also have visitor spots, limited visitor spots for people who are individuals who have their kids, who are babysitting grandparents or whatever, or are coming to want to take their kids on a swing or so forth and so on. And so there's a way that they've looked at. We have discussed that in light of some things that occurred here today. Don't want to really go in too far of that because we're going to allow our attorney to look into further on what's going on with the prosecutor. But that being said, is one of the things that we could look at. We looked at that, is that there's a possibility for our parks, but whether we could do something to restrict the air through parking and through permit, and that the permit would go up. And we did reach out, Quentin reached out to the business administrators at both Saddle River and Upper Saddle River to see what they're doing and to see if there's things that we could do to try to, you know, find something that fits for us also here to meet the needs of our town. The second thing is about the permit. We had a ordinance meeting, a committee meeting on this past week. For the next meeting, we are looking to have something in place for the permit for our parks for more than fifteen people at a time. So we're looking for something that would go on, we'd be able to introduce that at the next meeting. We hope, knowing that the language comes from the attorney, we don't make the ordinances as the attorney does. We only pass them. So we hope that, you know, some of the things that are brought to report to us, very good information, I would be, you know, something that we would put through. And we'll bring it back again to the ordinance committee to look at and bring it on hopefully at the next meeting. So the two things that you did speak about are rather relative to what we did because you spoke about both of them in the last few days.
I know. Hey, where's the Dakwizi button from Staples?
Jonathan Marcus, we look forward. All of the items that we've heard spoken about, one thing which is true to me is that to make sure that this is a safe town the way that it's been safe and that it stays the town that we have, one of the most crucial parts of that is our police officers, like Officer Hunt here. We are truly lucky in this town to have a police department that is a Kalia certified, is a top agency in the country. We have a police department that our own, we spent $50,000 in taxpayer money to have a consultant look at it. Came out with rave reviews of it. Our police officers have a very difficult job. And we've all seen that. We read it in the news every single day. But one of the most difficult jobs is basically enforcing the law. So you as the council need to ensure, take every possible measure to ensure that the laws you are putting in place are enforceable and are constitutionally permitted. Because what happens is that officer should not be left in a place, but that officer has to choose between enforcing the law that is potentially unconstitutional and suffering the repercussions of that. So I think we need to support our officers and just recognize that they are a key element in all these items we're talking about. When we say enforce the laws, who's enforcing them? It's guys like Officer Hunt here. Those are the guys that are going to do it. On the time, we have everybody here for all they've done. They offer so much to this town. Most of us, many of us here, our kids just came out of the Junior Police Academy last week. The Youth Leadership Academy they have, the types of programming they have. The officers in this town are a critical part. And so what I'm going to leave you with is, and I want residents to look at, I'm deeply concerned when I see that there is an item on this agenda later this evening which appears to be seeking to disband the Mala Police Department and create a Department of Police which will be under the control of a politically appointed civilian director. Because to me, that's saying there's something wrong with our police department. And gosh darn it, there is nothing wrong with our department we have now. We should be praising them, not seeking to disband them. Keep the morals up with our guys. Let's applaud them for the work they do. Let's not seek to demoralize them by disbanding their unit as they are now and creating a whole new structure for who knows what purposes. But I got to tell you, having a civilian police director? What's that all about? And what? How come nobody's been talking about that all these weeks? We're all worried about enforcing our laws. Let's praise our police and let's thank them for the job they've done. Thank you, Mr. Marcus. I was a police officer in this town. And I thank you, sir. This has nothing to do with the officers. This is an administration decision. When you say there's nothing wrong with that police department, you're on the outside. I was there for twenty-nine years. So you're saying there's something wrong with the chief of police? I'm not going to get into it with you. But what I'm telling you is this council sat and we discussed it. And for you to not... You discussed it amongst yourselves, not to the public. So this is news to us. This is news to us that there is a problem with the administration of our police department? Mr. Marcus.
Isn't that on the agenda later on?
Yes, it is, yes. So sit back, enjoy. Please sit back, enjoy. I'm worried that you're going to sit back. I'll go sit back because I should be sitting up there. So I'm going to go sit back and watch you guys. You better get me out of here. I'm watching you. I'm watching all of you.
It seems that this whole hearing is beginning to involve the courts and the crowding and outsiders, so to speak, coming in. I don't want to oversimplify it, but wouldn't it just be easier to pass signs that say "for Mala residents only" and have the police monitor the situation?
I'll let the attorney respond to that.
Thank you for your comment. What I can tell you is that it's up to this body to establish the appropriate rules and regulations. I've heard a number of concerns expressed by residents this evening in respect of overcrowding and the like at the municipal park or parks. What I can say is that it is being worked on. And at some point, we will recommend the appropriate rules and regulations to be adopted by this body to address the various concerns that are being expressed here this evening.
Well, this is just a suggestion. And I thought perhaps suggestions would be welcome.
It's actually, right now, one of the things that we have to look at is what we can or can't do in the park, what we're allowed based on state law or the laws, that's the problem.
But other towns have signs in their public areas that say "for residents only"?
I'm going to let the business administrator speak on that because we did reach out to another park, you know, town that was in discussion. And people thought that that was true. And we don't believe that that is.
But that was one other town. There must be state rules or regulations for that thing.
I'll just say, there are stories like that around. And when we check with other communities, we find that that's not exactly the case. There are some stories about Upper Saddle River and Saddle River. We're checking with them now to find out more specifically what they do. In one community, they control parking. They don't actually have any signs with regard to residency or non-residency, but they do have municipal parking permits required. In another community I checked with today, they don't have any signage at all that we thought they did. So we are looking at what other people are doing. But there are some rules with regard to whether you took state money or federal money to develop your park system. And we have to be mindful of that. I'm getting into more of a legal area with which I should stay out of. But we are doing our due diligence there.
Well, not at all. My question is, aren't there state or state laws as far as what you can do? Does each town determine themselves what rule they're going to have as far as they have signs like that? I mean, if you check with Saddle River but don't check with Clinton, how do you really get any right information?
Well, we're reaching out pretty broadly. And I'm going to leave it at that right now. The attorney can go into it further if she thinks it's appropriate.
Okay. Thank you.
Please, city of Julia, Six West Road in Mala. I'm here tonight because I'm upset about what you said about us in the paper. I've been here forty years. And the one thing when I moved into this town that I was so proud about is the diversity that we have in this town. We welcome everybody. Every community needs rules, laws, and structure to survive. We have ordinances, we have laws. Yes, we have a great police department, fire department. We're one of the luckiest towns to have GTW, youth police. We are run well. However, when people come in to break, one thing I think this community agrees on, no matter who they are, and I'm not picking out any group, any group at all, what I'm saying is, we have laws and structure in this town. But this community, as long as I've been here, has never allowed threats or bullying. And I don't think we should do it now. We shouldn't allow it. We should adhere to our laws and our structure. We welcome everybody. But they're not going to change our laws. They have to abide by our laws.
Joe Rodriguez, 897, Darwin, from Athens. A resident for thirty years. My parents and I came from Europe in 1948 and lived in the barren and green. And what I'm saying, I don't mind because law is the law. Should be obeyed for a country of laws. Without laws, we have anarchy. So when you have people coming in from another state, that was another state, cross the state lines to use facilities in the municipality, I think it's wrong. Now, Connecticut, maybe some other states, people come in, use our facilities, leave garbage, walk away. What if somebody gets hurt in the park? Who's liable? Somebody has to get sued. It's all liability. Cover people from another state. You know, liability today, people get sued for anything. It's easy. Very litigious society. So therefore, why are we allowing people from another state to come in? The other thing, how the hell did they get up that pole? They want the licensed general contractor to remove poles, take all that. Did I say anything about religion? Did I say anything about religion?
I'm asking you to say.
I didn't say anything about religion.
She just asked clarify. You said she didn't hear what he says.
How do they get up that pole? Who allowed them to go up that pole? Is that religious? I don't think so. As a general contractor, we did intersections, taken out poles. We could never touch them. We could never go over a pole. How did those PVC pipes get on that pole? And right up against utilities? Somebody could be electrocuted. You take a look at those PVC pipe and you'll see they purposely were put near a utility so it looks like it's a, because it's conflict that they come down from poles all over the place. It was made to look like it was there and it belonged there. And some were put low, others were put high to make it look like, it's like an empty PVC pipe coming down with a pole. I believe it was done on purpose to deceive. And again, why do we allow people from another state? We pay taxes for that piece of property to maintain it, to pick up the garbage, make sure it's clean. Why should we allow some? Maybe they should pay us to use our facilities. Say thank you very much.
Good afternoon. From a perspective of North Carolina, Jersey. So first and foremost, I think the mayor and the council, the police departments have done a tremendous job in fast action. We've done a great job of playing chess, checkers, so to speak, countering their moves with our moves. However, we have to be a step ahead. We have to be playing chess while they play checkers. We need to reach out to the communities of Lakeview, New Jersey.
Okay, sir. Allow me to say.
Okay. Well, simple two-bird-one-stone solution. We should bury the cables. Put them underground. There'll be no poles. Put PVC piping on it. So I was under the impression that tonight's meeting was in regards to...
The case law terminated a letter that was sent by the zoning officer with respect to zoning violation. You'd like to speak about the zoning violation? I don't have a concern about that. Now, to be clear, what happened here is that ONR permitted the era to be put on these poles. The poles are within the municipal right-of-way. Because they're within the municipal right-of-way, municipal consent is required. We sent a letter to ONR as well as to the owner of the era. Also conducting some additional research at this point, trying to get copies of any easements, agreements, franchise agreements. Once we obtain that information by the date that we requested it, which is August the 4th, then we will evaluate it and we will proceed from there. What I said at the beginning of this meeting and I've repeated it throughout, I would like there not to be any comments by the public with respect to the era, with respect to a particular religious group. You'd like to talk about the zoning ordinance and enforcing the zoning ordinance? I don't have a problem with that. What I'm concerned about is that any statements here this evening could be perceived as being discriminatory and that why they're not being allowed.
Understood. How would the township go about having electrical cables buried underground? How would the township go about having cables buried underground so that A, this problem doesn't exist? B, when we have, you know, storms and like Sandy, we don't have large power damages? Is that something that's possible?
Well, some of the newest communities that we have that are built underground, that's one of the things that we've asked from the newer communities. I don't know what we would have to do on the older communities. That would be something I think we'd have to ask. We have to ask larger ones.
Right. So, okay. So, all right, that's pretty much all in common. Bury the cables, that's all. All right.
Good evening. TJ Ramalkey, I live on State Street. I just have a question in reference to the... I'm not on Facebook. I haven't seen like all of the stuff that's going around. So I'm not really familiar. But when were the signs put on the poles? Am I not asked that question? Do we know, like, when did it occur?
Just looking through my notes. I don't know when the signs were put on the poles. What I do know is it came to the township's intention around July 21st of this year. Prior to that, now I do know that June 21st. The zoning officer wrote a letter to the era advising them that the zoning ordinance was being violated. Again, as I stated earlier, municipal consent is required before you place any items on utility poles. We acknowledge that those poles are owned by Orange and Rockland Electric. However, because they're within the municipal right-of-way, permission is required to retain from the township of Mala. Permission was not obtained. This is simply an enforcement of the township's zoning ordinance and nothing more.
Great. Question, were we aware? Did we receive any documentation or a letter notifying the town that they would be put up?
I'm going to answer that as, from the council's perspective, there is not a member of this council that was notified that these were going up.
What's your fear?
Now, there has been, from...
Now, there has been, from my understanding, I look at the business administrator, there was some things that went on with the business administrator due to insurance in order to go back and forth because they can't put something up in town without insurance and without them going through with the actual police detail or security detail that they would provide on their own. So based, once they have their insurance, anyone who's doing contracting work, you have Orange and Rockland, Verizon, there's work going on right now on the Carter Boulevard, anybody who has that has to have insurance, has to be able to go through the actual detail that you see, that's why you see the cards out there. That to me, I, we never foretold that. Council never knew that, never knew anything about it. Right, I'll let the business administrator discuss that.
Well, the attorney is correct that the work was accomplished in the latter part of June. We were first advised, actually I heard about it initially from the chief of police in May, that somebody was doing work on the poles and we had no information about that. The police started making inquiries, found out that Orange and Rockland had authorized this and permitted it and it came to our attention at that time. The company that installed this was advised by the police department that they needed a police detail in order to do this safely and that was accomplished again sometime in the latter part of June.
So the police department was aware of it and they gave them the okay?
Yep.
Well, I'm just curious. I'm just curious, so is that a guess?
Who gave them the okay?
The officers will.
No, I asked the question, they didn't ask the question. I'm asking. So we were, so the police department was aware?
Yep, the police department provided the.
Okay, so I'm just curious, is there a process in place where if the police department is maybe aware of something, where it has to go up a chain of command to the town and the town has to, like, how is that possible that the police department was aware, but none of you guys were aware? I mean, that, that seems like this, like somebody dropped the ball there and I get it, it happened, but I mean, are you guys looking into fixing? Because that seems like something went wrong, there was a misstep. Are you guys looking into fixing that process?
Let me answer this way for you. My firm mailed a letter to Rockland, I'm sorry, ORU, addressing this very issue. There's a statute on point that requires, that required Orange and Rockland Electric to approach this council, Township of Mala, to obtain permission. They failed to do that. So we've directed the appropriate letter to Orange and Rockland Electric, we are waiting on a response.
Awesome.
We gave them until August the fourth to provide us with various documents and to respond to that letter that was generated by this, by my firm.
Awesome. I'm not sure if my question was answered though. I really appreciate that, but I don't think my question was answered. Is there going to be a process put in place so that that ball doesn't, there was something, can you all agree that, that something went wrong in communication? I get it, I mean, I've been married for five years, me and my wife were a great team, but we don't always, we don't always communicate the right way all the time. So when we don't do that, we try to put a process in place so it improves our communication. I'm just wondering. Like the gentleman before me said, I love this town more than anything in the whole world, man. I've been here since I was eight years old, I'm thirty-six, I've been here twenty-eight years. I mean, this is the greatest place on earth and I haven't been around the world, to me, this is the greatest place on earth. And I'm not, I love the police, I love guys, I love all you guys, I voted for, I think every one of you. We're not mad at that, but like, is there a process being put in place so something like that, the communication between the police department and the town doesn't go wrong again?
The answer is that there needs to be a better process.
I really appreciate that.
I can tell you that at the last agenda meeting that we had last Friday, when it was brought to my attention of what actually happened and that this was put up without the council's approval, I turned to the business administrator and wanted to know exactly your question of how this happened. And I stated to him that this should never, ever happen again.
I mean, I get, I get. It happened, it's true. I really appreciate your time, I appreciate everything that you do, I appreciate the town, I appreciate the police officers, keep going what you do. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Michael Rocco, resident, Southern Winter Terrace. Just wanted to give you a story about the zoning that I've experienced. In twenty-twelve, but actually in two thousand nine, I purchased my first home in this town, which I love to death. And I had a porch that was falling off and I wanted to replace it and I got a contractor in and he said that it was nineteen and a half feet from the road and if I took it down, it would no longer be grandfathered, I would have to go through the zoning board and get permission. I went through more red tape and hell, I can't even tell you, I had to send certified letters to everybody practically except the pole. In front of the board and explain my case, I had to show digital photos and I get it, we have all these rules in place so that we have a good town. I wasn't mad or, I mean, it was a lot of work and it was a struggle, you know, to get all that going, but I get why we have all that. But my question is, if I went through that as a resident just to replace a porch that was already there, then I think we should make everybody follow the same rules and the same red tape. The other thing that I would like to request is, I think that, if I'm not mistaken, I believe the poles are jointly owned between ORU and Verizon, New Jersey, and I believe that they have a government relations people and I think we should ask them to come to the next meeting so we can hash a lot of these issues out.
I would reach out as an administrator, I think that we can reach out to them and if they're here, I think it would be a great idea, we talked about that before.
Hi, my name is Michelle Propas and I live at twenty-four Island Road in Mala. Very briefly, I just wanted to read something from the Outdoor Code from Scouting dot org as I used to be the committee chairperson for Mala Club Scout PAC two fifty-eight.